Mary, I have 6:30.
Okay, I will call this fifth regular meeting of the RSU 16 School Board to order, and we will start with the pledge, and Ken will lead us in that. Can you run mute?
I just did it, and no one heard me, did they?
That's correct, because you were on mute. Let's stand and say the pledge with Ken.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we will start with our mission statement. And our mission is to prepare and support all students within a culture of excellence to do their best and to be their best, so that each can be a successful contributing citizen, able to adapt to change and to successfully respond to the future. And pursuant to subsection 403a MRSA, we will now confirm that each member of the Regional School Unit 16 School Board can both hear and be heard. We'll do this by calling the roll. Members present are asked to say here. We ask all members to listen, record any audio difficulties when the roll call is completed. Ed Rabasco.
Here.
Joe Parent. Joe is absent. Melanie Harvey.
Here.
Norm Bopalot.
Here.
Norm Davis.
Here.
James Kraus is absent. Laura Heeman.
Here.
Mike Downing. Mike was here. I can see him, but we can't hear you, Mike. You're on mute. I'll come back to you. Mike LaCass. And I think Mike is absent. Steve Holbrook. And Steve, can you go off mute so we can hear you? Press the space bar, Steve.
I can hear him.
Okay. But we all need to be able to hear. Amber Lyman.
Here.
Lena Stotts.
I'm here.
Kelsey Earl.
Here.
Mary Martin, present. Travis Ritchie.
Here.
Amy Frida.
Here.
Anna Brettler.
Here.
Okay, thanks. And thought later in the meeting, I'm going to talk a little bit about the virtual school board conference that I spent like two and a half, three days on last week. And one of the sessions I went to was best practices for managing remote meetings. So I thought it might be good for me to just share a little bit as we start this meeting. For the, in the most part, I think we're doing really well. When we listened to what a well-run, remote meeting looks like, it sounded like our meetings. There were a few things that I thought it might just be helpful for me to read. And on that, I'm going to ask Amy if she has anything to add to that, because I know she also went to, to that session. One of the things they said was to be careful about being too casual. Board members should remember to dress appropriately when attending meetings, attend meetings from appropriate locations, and to devote their full time and attention to the meeting. It also suggested that board members make sure to be as prepared as possible, that remote meetings often take longer than in-person meetings, and meetings will be much more efficient if everyone is prepared. And also talked about taking extra caution with executive sessions, which we have. The primary security concern around remote meetings typically does relate to executive sessions because they are confidential. Board members, administrators, and anyone permitted to attend those sessions should be in locations where they cannot be overheard by others, including family members. The only other thing was just a reminder to be on mute when you're not speaking. And Amy, is there anything that you could add to that?
I think just channel your inner kindergartner, and I'm serious. This morning, I, I'm a VL5 elementary substitute teacher, so I was substituting for the kindergarten students today in VL5. And in being prompt, I think Mary said, not taking it too casual. Come dressed for your part, being in your right location. You know, if there's something that happens that requires your attention, then turning off your video, dealing with that, and then turning the video back on, avoiding eating and excessive amounts of drinking, and just making sure that, yep, Steve, you're okay. Not being excessive amounts. And then just making sure that you're, you're, you're staying up to date. And I think, Mary, you mentioned that about being in a location away from your family, so you can have the, the best attention span to where we are in the agenda. So channel your inner kindergartner.
So I'm going to talk later in the meeting about some other takeaways from that conference, but I thought now might be a good time to mention that. So we're going to move on to our public participation. And looking at it, we have 21 attendees in addition to us, so I would say welcome to them. And I'll just review our public participation process. During public participation, the RSU 16 Public Participation Policy and Guidelines must be followed. The speaker must be identified by the chair, and Amy helps me out with that, particularly during the remote meetings. If you would like to speak, indicate your desire to speak by raising your electronic hand. And then Amy will add attendees to the panel, two at a time, for recognition. And just a reminder that we need you to identify yourself by name and address, that no complaints or allegations related to district employees will be allowed. And policy and state law is clear that confidentiality and the privacy rights of our employees must be protected. So Amy, do we have anybody that would like to speak?
Not seeing any hands up, but I'll just welcome Joe Parent has joined us. I just want to make sure that he get, his name gets recorded in the attendees list. And that also gives us a moment to see if anyone will raise their electronic hand. And I'm still not seeing any. We'll give him another 10 seconds or so, Mary.
Okay.
Mary, can you hear me now?
I can, Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll move on to some recognitions and acknowledgements. We want to welcome Anna Brettler to our school board. She is our junior representative, and Amy will be a great mentor to her. Amy has added a lot to our board, Anna, and I'm sure that she will support you in doing the same. So thank you both, Amy and Anna, for being here. I also want to recognize our bus drivers. October does have Bus Driver Appreciation Week, and we appreciate them during that month, but we appreciate them throughout the year and want to say thank you to our drivers and our monitors, and that we do recognize the important part that you play in meeting the needs of our students. I also want to thank Scott Lassard for his service to the RSU 16 School Board. And he was a representative for Mechanic Falls and has resigned because he had a change in residence. And we are very happy to welcome Kelsey Earl, who is our new member from Mechanic Falls. And welcome, Kelsey. And we want to thank you for, for stepping up and filling this seat so quickly. That certainly speaks volumes about your commitment. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
And moving on to our consent agenda. And as part of our consent agenda, we have the minutes from our October 5th meeting. We have some notification of support staff new hires, which would include Patricia Weller as a bus driver for RSU 16, Zachary Hartzel, a mechanic, both positions of which we are very happy to have filled. Notification of resignation from Mark Zertz, special ed teacher at Poland Regional High School, and Sally Korn, an ed tech at PCS. We also have our subcommittee October minutes for Operations Committee Personnel and Finance and Educational Policy. Do we have a motion?
I made a motion, we accept those, please.
Okay, Mike has made a motion to approve. Do we have a second? I see one from Norm Davis, so we have a motion. And a second, is there any discussion on the consent agenda or anything anyone would like to have removed from it? Travis?
I just see that the, the updated agenda had the other resignation on it, but we didn't get a resignation letter.
Correct. Ken, do you want to address that?
Sure, we didn't get a resignation letter because it was so quick that we accepted it. If you would like a copy of it, we'd be more than happy to share it with you. We just received it Saturday or Friday. Friday, I'm sorry. So didn't have it mailed out.
Okay, Ken, if you could just forward that to us at some point.
Will do.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, seeing we have a motion and a second. And the motion was to approve the consent agenda. Ed Rabasco.
Yes.
Joe Parent.
Yes.
Melanie Harvey. Norm Bopalot.
Yes.
Melanie, did I hear you?
Yes, I'm not sure why you're not hearing me.
Well, well, right now, you're, you're off mute now, and we can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Norm Davis.
Yes.
Laura Heeman.
Yes.
Mike Downing.
Yes.
Steve Holbrook. Ken, can you hear Steve?
I can hear him, he said yes.
Okay. Amber Lyman.
Yes.
Lena Stotts.
Yes.
Kelsey Earl.
Yes.
Mary Martin, yes. Travis Ritchie.
Yes.
Amy Frida.
Yes.
Anna Brettler. And Anna, we, I always ask, because we are real, always interested in your perception, and Amy has most often chosen to vote. But if there is a point where you would like to pass, please feel that, that you can do that. You know, your perception is important to us, but we also recognize that you may choose to pass it sometimes. All right, let's move on to our financial statement. And we'll ask Stacy to present that, and that was reviewed also by the Personnel and Finance Committee meeting in October.
Good evening. This report is number eight, and so we are at 69.23% remaining. And so I've looked at the lines on your summary that are below that, and it starts right with the Board of Directors. As you know, we had to have a full ballot in July to pass our budget at the referendum, and that required paying to have them printed. Usually, we just have a one-question ballot, and we do those here, but these had to be able to be tallied by the town's software machines, and so we did have to get them printed by their vendors. And so there was a cost to that. We also had bank fees on the Siemens project, which are, were $600. We could not take them from the proceeds of the project, but we will be getting some offsets. We are waiting for $8,700 in rebates from Efficiency Main for some of those projects that we've done. Down in the third section of the summary, the summer school, of course, those lines are well below, but that program is over for this budget year. The health services, down at the bottom of page one, is at 63.14%, and that's because a lot of the supplies get ordered at the beginning of the year. On page two, for technology, that's at 45.62%. We have leases and software support agreements that are paid upfront at the beginning of the year, and so that's what happens on those lines. The improvement of instruction is below by a small amount because we have the college courses that come out of that line, and those are either paid or encumbered at this point in the year. The assessment, that is something we pay half and half, and so we have made a half payment on that, and so that's adjusted about 50%. On page three, the PCS and Elm Street operations are below the 69%, and that's due to repairs and maintenance lines, because a lot of times we do projects in the summer, and that's what happened there. Debt service, that's at 14.9% because those payments are made in October, and just a small interest payment is made in May, so that's the balance in that section. We talk about the special ed out-of-district placement line. I call those Mary's lines. She likes to watch those very closely, and I appreciate her helping that. When the printout went out on October 19th, we had not completed the first quarter yet of payments. Those payments were made on October 23rd, and so it puts the K8 line at 72.81% and the high school line at 82.27% at the end of September for a full quarter. So we, we will continue to watch those closely throughout the year. The food service, I just gave you a quick summary sheet on that because the summer program has been extended through the end of this year because of COVID. And so we will be reimbursed from the federal food service program for every meal that we issue. Right now, the program is at 8,400 in the red through September, but a couple of items that's, that is good news. The parent debt has dropped from 72,000 down to 50,000 because payments are continuing to come in for those old balances, even though all the lunches are free right now. And we're also utilizing some equipment and consumable supplies from the coronavirus relief grant because we are doing things that we wouldn't normally do. There's a lot of prepackaged food for home deliveries and things. And so those are not things that were in the budget, and we're able to use the coronavirus relief fund for those. So that's, that's helping alleviate some of the burden on the food service program, the local budget that we have. And then just a couple of quick things on adult ed. Page one of her page, on page one of her five-page report, on the very bottom line, her graduation supplies are at 27%, and that's because she had her graduation for last year after July 1, though it did come out of this budget. And on page four, you'll see she has her own coronavirus relief fund grant, and we have been fully reimbursed for that one. That came in today from the state. That's all I had.
Any questions for, for Stacy? If not, do we have a motion? Was there?
Has her hand up, Mary.
Who does?
Lena.
Okay, Lena, go ahead.
I just have a question about the parent debt for the school lunches. This might sound foolish, but is, are these parents that are paying that what they would normally pay, say, $25 a month or whatever, and is that going towards just the general student debt or just that person, that student's account?
Yes, each student has their own debt, so there's no general debt that they all pay into. It's the, the students' individual accounts, and the payments get credited to them when they come in.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mary, I make a motion, we accept the printout as written and explained.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I have a second, Mary.
And a second from Norm Bopalot. So we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion or questions on the financial report? Is any, Norm? Norm Davis, did you have a question? Norm says he's connecting to audio. Okay, Norm, do you have a question?
Oh, yeah. It's not actually, I guess, for Stacy, but when she did mention the out-of-district expenses, have we made any progress? I know it's difficult with the COVID. We budgeted money a year ago on, on last year's budget to research what we could do to bring more kids back in the, you know, local system. Have we made any progress on that?
I'll go, I'll go ahead and answer that.
Okay.
We can't hear you, Ken.
He's saying he has to turn Steve's down so that Ken will be able to speak and will be able to hear him.
I muted Steve for you.
Still can't hear you.
How about now?
Ah, we got you.
Okay.
So what we're doing is getting feedback in here with him. I have to turn his down.
Okay.
But basically, we've done the research, and we can't find teachers to do that program we talked about, Norm.
Okay, that answers it.
All right, we're, are, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion or questions? And that motion was for approval of the financial statement. Ed Rabasco.
Yes.
Joe Parent.
Yes.
Melanie Harvey.
Yes.
Norm Bopalot.
Yes.
Norm Davis.
Yes.
Laura Heeman.
Yes.
Mike Downing.
Yes.
Steve Holbrook. I, Ken saying he can hear him. Amber, Amber Lyman.
Yes.
Lena Stotts.
Yes.
Kelsey Earl.
Yes.
Mary Martin, yes. Travis Ritchie.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries, and that was unanimous. Let's see if Ken's got his audio fixed so that he could do his superintendent's report.
I sure hope so. Can you hear me now?
That's much better.
Okay, we're not having the feedback. I, I was able to turn Steve's down. Good evening, everyone. Our current enrollment as of today is Elm Street, 232 students. Minnet Consolidated School, 220 students. Poland Community School, 422 students. Bruce M. Whittier Middle School, 268 students. Poland Regional High School has 473 students. Our total enrollment is 1,615 students, and there's no change from last month. But we do have 169 of those students that I just talked about in total that are in Virtual Learning 5. The new CRF-2 grant has been approved. And what we did do is we have purchased a number of things with that money. It's a, a good amount, $1.4 million. And we had to give project names to every one of them, so hopefully you'll, you'll understand the project names, but I'll tell you what we're buying under those. The first project name is curriculum material. Can't touch this because you can't share materials anymore. We had to buy materials for each student. So we've got some Title I books, books for VL5, some grade level books, some kindergarten books, supplies for VL5 students, VL5 extra work hours for people working extra hours. We have some technology MacBook Airs. We have some stand-up portable desks for the high school, and we do have some ceiling-mounted projectors that are coming in, and also the purchase of the Zoom webinar for, for the district. Under project name, we got you covered. We got two drums of vital oxidized sanitizer. We have split cleaning solution. We have vinyl gloves. We have disposable masks. We have KN95 masks. We do have some disposable gowns, some safety goggles, some face shields, and some non-contact thermometers. Project name, my eyes on you while you can't, while you breathe and, and better recess. We do have 109 power energy recovery ventilation units. It'll come in additional to what we had from the first one. Air purification system. We have surveillance camera systems for all three elementary schools. We have electrostatic sprayers, which will be spraying the ionized, ionized sanitizer. We also have playground equipment for all three elementary playgrounds. We have some new bicycles for the high school. We have some water bottle filling stations and portable radios for, for the schools. Project, please pick up my students for school. We have three full-side buses. We have one 10-passenger van. We have four drums of oxide sanitizer. We have disposable wipes. We have paper towels. We have victory sprayers, and we have paid for, will be paying for some contract bussing services that we had to get. The next project, or the last project, is our food services one, and a project's name is keep it warm during delivery. We do have on-order one food service delivery van. We have four food warmers. We have eight metal delivery carts. We do have consumable pa, paper packaging, and we do have a good number of prepackaged foods for our system. Basically, this adds up to $1.4 million, and we are in the process of, they've all been ordered, and we should be receiving them over the next month or so. I'd like to announce that Elm Street has received donations in the amounts of $687 from Hannaford, $250 from Let's Go 5210, and $900 from the Little Brick Pub. Poland Community School has received $3,491 from Hannaford, and Whittier Middle School has awarded a community grant and received $2,000 grant for the purchase of a laminator. I had the opportunity to attend the MSSA conference on October 30th and 31st. This year was held, this conference was held virtually, very much like Mary had talked earlier about her attendance in the conference. There was a lot of good stuff, but the best thing was, although you could only go to one, it, one session at one time, they're all online right now, and I've had the opportunity to go through and go and attend four or five others that I hadn't been able to attend during the conference. So that was pretty valuable. I, I'd like to thank Deputy Town Manager Nikki Pratt I'd like to thank Deputy Town Manager Nikki Pratt from the Poland Office. She was nice enough to conduct a webinar for our high school students on how to register voting. So thank you, Nikki. I also would like to announce that the Teamster Local 340 has been decertified as the bargaining agent for the RSU 16 transportation workers. As of November 6, 2020. I will be working with the transportation, members of the transportation department to come up with a work agreement that will bring them into the future. During the arrival of buses and parents dropping off their students at Elm Street on Tuesday, November 3rd, a gas odor was detected outside the gym where the parent drop off point was. Inside the 56 hallway and by the door that leads to the playground. Teachers in the 56 wing were reporting that their room heaters were showing an error code indicating there was no gas. Our maintenance director for the elementary school quickly determined that there was no pro, there was a propane leak. He turned off the propane gas to all propane tanks, informed the principal Jessica Mattson and called 911 where we had response from the first responders. Fred Barlow, Transportation Director, was notified by Principal Mattson. And then they began the process of evacuating our students from element, from the elementary school because of the leak. Within minutes, Fred had his RSU 16 buses arrive at Elm Street, transport the staff and students to the offsite location at the Vineyard Church in Mechanic Falls. We had a, our Dead River technician had determined when he looked at it that it was a propane, propane gas regulator had malfunctioned and was releasing and leaking propane. The regulator was replaced and the entire, entire system had been checked for leaks. Our student and staff were safe to return to school the next day as normally scheduled. I'd like to thank all of those involved for the efficient evacuation of our students and staff during this very stressful morning. Thank you to all the first responders from Mechanic Falls in the county. They did a great job. Thank you to the Vineyard Church for being in a location where we could safe haven our students. And to the parents and guardians for their patience and cooperation. So because when we did our reunification of parents and students, the Vineyard Church, it went very, very smoothly. And it could have gone otherwise, so their patience was really critical. I'd also like to congratulate Principal Mattson and her elementary, our Elm Street staff for working together without hesitation to safeguard all the children of Elm Street School. I'm very proud of their teamwork and their courage of, that for all of that took once, kept our children safe in this dangerous situation. If anybody has any questions, both Jess Mattson and I are available to respond to those questions right now. I don't see any, so thank you. My next thing on the list is that I'll let you know that Fred Barlow is going to put out three bids for three school buses in one caravan that we will get, we're rid of because we're getting new ones. The bid results will be available at our December 14th school board meeting. And the last thing on the list is just want to let you know we are still looking to get a COVID-19 tracking nurse in the district, but haven't had any success. But I have asked that our high school RN Lisa Store be available to be able to brief everyone on the goings on of RSU 16's involvement in any positive case or close contacts that we've had to deal with over the last month or so. So Lisa, if you would.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Ken. I'll provide a summary of our positive case at PRHS and kind of the events and how they occurred. There is a lot of steps in there, so I'll do my best to summarize that in a short amount of time. The first thing that happened was we, Carrie Med received a secure email from the CDC advising them that we did indeed have a positive case that went to PRHS. And that happened on October, the evening of October 11th. And then Carrie reached out to me and we started our investigation on Monday morning on Columbus Day. In which I called the DOE School Nurse Liaison who coordinates with the CDC. I called her for further guidance, however, it was a holiday. So she wasn't on and I spoke with the Deputy Commissioner in which he was covering for her and he contacted the CDC and the CDC then contacted me to identify who the individual was and gave us further guidance on our next steps. And they had let us know the individual tested positive on October 9th. So then we worked to, Carrie and I worked together to figure out who all the close contacts were as this individual's infectious period was October 7th and 8th, so we had to look at all the areas this person was in on September 7th and 8th to identify then who the close contacts were. Ken reached out to the community and notified them, making them aware of the positive case and that school would be closed for three days as we went through our investigation process. We identified 31 students and nine staff as being close contacts. We made calls to all the students and staff, making them aware that they are a close contact or were identified as close contact at that time. And guidance was given to them on next steps for them and advising them to quarantine for 14 days from their last exposure. We, I provided the close contact information, contact information to the CDC at that point in time because they enroll them in what's called the Sarah Alert System so that they could do daily monitoring of those symptoms of any symptoms they may have, maybe having. And then the close contacts were due to quarantine until October 22nd. At that point in time, unless they develop symptoms along the way, then that would impact their return date to school. On October 17th, which was a Saturday, the CDC did reach out to all the close contacts. It does take them a while and in between there, I did reach out to the families just to check in and see how they were doing. Because it does take the CDC a while as they get more and more cases to then reach out to the close contacts and enroll them into that Sarah Alert System. And then, so the CDC did reach out to them on the Saturday and they did find that there was one close contact was reporting symptoms at that time. So then our gears shifted a little bit and that, that case that had some symptoms became a presumed positive. And the individual was advised to be tested at that time as the individual had not been tested at that point. So they, I started, the seven, on the 17th, we started the investigation of the close contacts to the probable case. And we, on, they let me know on the evening of the 17th and then on, first thing on the 18th, we still hadn't gotten results back. So all the close contacts of the probable case were then alerted to then quarantine. That was an additional 12 students and additional two staff. That until we had results back for the probable case that they would need to quarantine. And then on October 21st, a few days later, all the close contacts, the probable case were released from quarantine because the probable case had a negative COVID-19 test result, therefore releasing them from quarantine. And the positive COVID individual was released from isolation 10 days after testing positive on October 19th. That person was released from isolation and no longer was considered infectious. All the close contacts of the positive case were released from isolation on October 22nd. And then we're two weeks later, so we didn't have any more new cases in our school. Therefore, there was no evidence of any transmission within PRHS to link to our positive case. So I'm pretty confident in all the things that we're doing, our masking and social distancing and hand hygiene and stuff that we're doing is, is helping to permit, to prevent any spread within our school. So that was really reassuring to me that out of everyone that had been tested and everyone that was put in quarantine that we didn't have any subsequent positive results.
Does anyone have any questions? Any questions for Lisa?
I know it's a lot of information.
Lena had her hand up.
Lena did, yeah.
Sure.
I apologize. Lisa, my, my question wasn't directed specifically at you. It was actually to Ken and Amy. You had mentioned that you are, you still haven't found a nurse to, to do the COVID tracing. Does, are you guys going to consider maybe reposting the position as open to LPNs to kind of broaden your search? Are you still holding to, it has to be an RN?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I think that's probably a good idea to go ahead and broaden it and, and see if we can track maybe an LPN as well. I don't see, I think that'll help us.
My other question was for regarding the busing, but that can wait.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions on my overall report?
Ken. Ken, you had mentioned a van had been ordered for the food service.
Yes.
Do we still have to have that in our possession by the end of December or are they going to extend?
We need to have it in, in our possession by the end of December and we will.
You will, okay.
Yeah.
Is there any indication they may extend the time on some of this stuff?
Right now, the indication is they will not.
Okay.
So one of the things they've given a little bit on, if we have, in our contracts, have asked for delivery by the end of December and through no fault of our own. Then the, the person doesn't present that, we still have the ability to go ahead and ask for reimbursement afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lena, did you have another question? You said you had a transportation question.
I did. It was about regarding the, the decreditation of the Teamsters and now there's going to be some please correct me if I'm saying this wrong. Some contractors, maybe a subcontractor for the bus drivers, is that what's going to happen?
No, you, you, what we did is we had to have subcontracting to run our operation during COVID. Okay, so that's what we get received through their grant money. All of our bus drivers have been employed and working diligently. The difference between those decertification is now we're not, they no longer are in a collective bargain agreement or a union. I will work with whoever they want to send to me as a representative to extend or come up with a new work agreement. It's not through an association or union. It'll just be through the majority of the transportation personnel.
Okay, all right, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Ken?
Mike Downing has a question. Go ahead, Mike.
Ken, that food van, does that have, do you have to send that out to bed or just grabbing something? So we can have it before the end of December?
Yeah, it's the same thing that I had explained before, Mike, is because of the short time period. Not going out to bed for it, we, we went with our, our best opportunity and so we can have it before December.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay.
Any other questions for Ken? Not, we will move on to Amy and our Assistant Superintendent Report.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, Kelsey, and welcome, Anna. My name is Amy and I am Assistant Superintendent, as Mary just said. And I thought for my report tonight is I would just update everyone on where we are with our reopening plan. It's always good to get that update once a month because lots of things happen and occur from our month to month meetings. So as you remember, each, each, every two weeks, each county gets a designation of a color, red, yellow and green. And Anderson County remains green. And that suggested that we've been green all along that we could hold in-person instruction. However, in RSU 16, as most surrounding districts, we decided to go with the hybrid status for our reopening of our, of our schools. And that does mean that we are implementing, as Lisa talked about, all of those health and safety concerns are top priority of our, of our staff and our teachers as well as all, and our families and our students. And that includes masking, physical distancing, hand hygiene and doing those symptom checks before even getting on the bus or coming to school. We're still in our hybrid and two, two kind of things that are, why we're still there is our, our current bus load maximum is about 23 students. We do appreciate all of the families that do drive their children to and pick them up from school. That has helped our, the burden of, of not having our buses be over that maximum. Do check with Fred frequently to see where we are and to see if we can add additional students to those buses and what that impact would be. Also is our room, our room capacities, some of them are set up for the three foot distance as defined by the DOE between students and some are set up for the six foot distance. Craig and his maintenance staff are working on putting together all of the individual desks that were purchased with the, the CRF, the CARES money in order for each kid to have their own desk rather than having the tables in the classroom. So just a reminder that most of our kids receive hybrid instruction and so what that means is that's two days in person and three days remote. And on those three days of remote, our students are learning asynchronously, which means they're just learning on their own time and with their platform. And the reminder is Google is our seven through 12 and CSO is our pre-K through six. And I think we can all agree that there was a learning curve about how to plan for both in-person and students who would be remote. And it truly is a new way of thinking about teaching and learning. You know, if you just kind of stop and think about, teachers used to having their kids, you know, they're, they're anywhere from their 18 to 25 kids in their class and they have them five days a week, but now with our hybrid, they have them for two days of instruction. They have half of their kids for two days. And then the rest of their kids are learning remotely and then they swap that and they have a new set of kids for two days and they're teaching those same lessons that they taught to the kids that they had earlier in the week. So it is a new way of thinking as well as, again, our teachers, some of our class sizes are really, are small just due to either homeschooling or being part of VL five and some of our class sizes are four to five. So some of our kids, our teachers are used to having a big class of 16, 17, 18, 20, 25, and now they've got four to five. So it's some, definitely some, some learning curve of how to make sure to meet all of the students' needs and to give the, the interventions that they need as well as keep pace with our curriculum because all of our standards and curriculum and assessments are, are, are in this year. As you heard Ken say, so that's most of our kids receive that, that, that hybrid instruction, but VL five is our next layer and those are our kids that learn virtually five days a week. And you heard Ken say that we have 169 of those students in the district. And at PRHS, our VL five is accomplished through zooming into class. Originally, we thought it would be more heavy emphasis on ingenuity. You may have heard me talk about. But we do have most of our kids zooming into their class as well as using ingenuity. And all of our PRHS students are, are hooked on to a round table, so they do get that, that, that round table experience that we want all of our kids to have. At Whittier Middle School, ingenuity is the main, main way that VL five students do get their, their standards and their curriculum. Again, they do have their round table so that they are part of a bigger group. And they do receive one-on-one instructional pieces and check-ins with teachers after school hours, which we are using some of our CRF funds to be able to pay our teachers to, to work beyond their contracted hours to check in with those kids. And just a reminder, at the elementary level, VL five functions as its own school. So we really have four elementary schools in our district and that VL five school has three full-time teachers and seven halftime teachers. And those halftime teachers teach Monday, Tuesday, hybrid and then Thursday, Friday, VL five. And I get to serve as the principal of, of that. And I think as you probably scroll through the board, the, the reports from the principals is, you know, we're still, we're still trying to get better at this, making sure that our kids have good attendance and that they are engaging and staying motivated to stay up to date with their work completion. So we continue to work in those areas. Another layer of kids that's important for you to know about is we do have some kids that we call four to one. And these students do come to school four days a week and there's, especially at Elm Street School. Principal Mattson has, has developed a program because she has the space with, with some of her grade levels of kids being able to come in to receive their services. So they receive their interventions on their two non-in-person days. And then they're with their, their kids and their cohort on their two in-person days. As well, some of our special ed kids do receive that four to one service, so they come and come four days a week. At Whittier and PRHS, we are starting what we call plus one and you read about that in Carrie and Sean's report. Is that that extra day, so it's a plus one coming in one extra day in order to be able to get support on current work and overdue or missing work at Whittier and PRHS. As you may remember, our next reevaluation date is January 22nd, but kind of my phrase right now is we're not standing still just waiting for that to happen. We did add in two additional in-person days. Wednesdays have typically been days for our elementary staff to have full planning days and our Whittier and PRHS to zoom with their kids for class schedules, their full class schedule on Wednesdays. So on November 4th, we actually had our Cohort A students come for an additional in-person day. So that week Cohort A received three days of in-person. And on November 18th, we will add Cohort B coming on that Wednesday and they'll have three days of instruction this week. Fingers crossed that we're all still able to have in-person instruction as our numbers increase, you know, across the state of Maine. Um, I am pulling back together our think tank. You may recall this summer, I met with a group of teachers, three representatives from each building, uh, as well as the association and our administrative team. And we formed a think tank to give, inform, to give feedback and thoughts about what should happen next. And I'm pulling them back together on Thursday to give some feedback and suggestions on how do we increase our in-person instructional days? And then also I want to pick their brains about what should snow days look like in RSU 16. So I look forward to their feedback. I also wanted to let you know that there are no professional development initiatives this year. Uh, our, our Wednesdays, our early release Wednesdays, like we had last, uh, on November 4th, uh, are primarily used for planning and collaboration. And that's not to say that there's, there's no staff meetings because, yeah, there are some staff meetings in there and other groups that need to meet. But, uh, our principals recognize the need for our, our teachers to have as much planning time as possible. And then, um, our student-led conferences are nearly complete or completed at the grade seven through 12, uh, level. And they're in the process for completion at the pre-K through six level. So those are just a, a brief overview. Wanted to make sure that you're kind of picturing school running the, the way that, uh, we all picture it running and, uh, an RSU 16. Any questions? Lena, I see your hand.
Um, Amy, thank you for all the hard work that goes into this. I, I just wanted to say thank you for that. Um, I do have a question. Are, are there any plans for this additional in-person, uh, Wednesday for December or January? And the reason I ask is sort of threefold. One, it, Wednesdays, I, you know, like most people, we're thinking that Wednesdays were used for additional deep cleaning of the school. So does that mean that we've discovered that the school can be deep cleaned on like a Tuesday evening or a Wednesday evening before cohort B comes in on Thursday?
Yeah, we're, we're finding that our, our maintenance group, we still have our, our teachers doing the soap and water cleaning that has not been pulled back on by any means. But then also too, those additional cleaning of the high-touch surfaces do happen on Wednesday as well as being able to authorize, Ken has authorized some overtime, uh, on Saturday for us to be able to come in before that, that cohort. Cause I mean, you've got the cohort B comes in on Thursday, Friday, and then you've got to think about, well, what happens between, uh, Saturday and Sunday before cohort A comes in? So we have those, those cleanings happening on Wednesday as well as on Saturday.
So my, my other two issues were, um, I, I don't know for sure because I'm not a teacher. But, uh, I imagine the teachers had become uh, accustomed to the ability to have a, have some planning time on Wednesdays, um, where it was a remote day. Uh, what are, is that part of what your think tank is going to kind of go over? That, you know, how can you assist these, these educators in having, you know, that time that they need to plan? Um, especially where they're balancing, um, the hybrid and, and, and all of that is, is that, is your think tank going to address that?
Yeah. And I think too, primarily to our elementary administrative team has, is beginning to address that. So, uh, they do have their grade level planning teams and they met, uh, their administrators met to talk about, well, what does it look like going forward without having a full day of planning? And how do we capture some of the collaboration that has come out of this? Because that's really what has happened as to really working smarter, not harder. So it's, you know, you're a team of seven people, uh, for grade two in the district. So how does one plan science, one plan reading, one plan word work, one plan math? And then you share all that with each other. So, uh, we hope that we've built some, some good structures and systems and as well as trust in each other as teammates. And then that those can carry through and that we looked at what the timeline and the process was for those full days of planning. And then how do we, uh, you know, how do we, how do we take the, the maximum benefits from those and then put them into a smaller timeline?
If you were to put out a survey to your faculty, um, uh, regarding, you know, where they feel appreciated, where they feel supported, where they're struggling, would you be able to share the, the outcomes, not the personal, not, you know, not the personnel names of people of the educators? But would you be able to share the outcomes of that with the school board?
The outcomes? Absolutely. Yes, I would be able to do that.
And my final point, because I don't want to take up any more time is, um, with these extra days, are we considering that families that have parents that are not able to stay home and, and do virtual remote learning? Are we considering that they're having to pay extra days of daycare, whether the students are there or not? Because, um, I know that that isn't on the top of most people's list, but we do have a, we have a significant number of people in the mechanic falls to the bedroom town. Many people work outside of, out of, outside of mechanic falls. Um, and so these parents are having, again, it, I understand it, public school's not a babysitting system, but it, it's public school and most children go to public school. So I think when we move forward with our, our reopening plans for January 22nd, we need to consider the hardships that a lot of our families are facing with the, with, um, extra days, um, because they're being paid for whether they go or not and the reopening plans.
Okay.
Especially in light of, of a potential vaccine. Not that I'm for or against the vaccine, to be clear, but I think we need to keep all of those things in the, in mind.
Okay.
All right. Travis has his hand up, Amy.
Okay.
I just wanted to add, I agree with Lena that we should definitely focus on making sure that teachers, especially hybrid teachers, going from live instruction to VL5 definitely have enough planning period and that, you know, they're.
I do. I, I feel as though are, again, those seven teachers that are in both, they have their in-person and basically they're taking their in-person lessons and making them a little bit shorter into the VL5. Um, the VL5 schedule is, is, is not back-to-back-to-back like you would see if kids were in front of you. Uh, most of our VL5 lessons are between 15 minutes to 30, maybe 40 minutes for some of the upper grades. And then there's always an, a, a break time in between. So there's time for, um, teacher prep and there's time for kids to have a break, um, from the screen. And then, uh, also, um, we're focusing on our core four. So reading, writing, phonics or word work and math are the top priorities of our VL5. And then, um, like science and social studies, there isn't a direct lessons for elementary. Those, uh, there are from middle school and high school, um, but for elementary, those get pushed out via CSO. And again, those are all collaborated with, with, um, the grade level teams. And all of those lessons are housed in our CSO district library. So, you know, if we were all third grade teachers and you were in charge of the science lesson, I could just go in and pull your science lesson and push that out to my kids and, um, uh, use that.
Speaking of that, so to having, I make CSO lessons and basically what I've, I've never wanted to be a YouTuber or a video editor in my life. And then in March, I realized I had to suddenly shift, you know, what it meant to be a teacher. And some of these teachers that are creating this content are now learning the same skills that it takes to produce, you know, YouTube videos and content that it's, it's pretty heavy. It's a, it's a sharp learning period. And so hybrid teachers, I have a soft spot for them since I am one. And, uh, just that specific type of content takes a lot of behind-the-scenes time and prep.
Yeah.
And timing and, um, just, uh, I, I think that you guys are doing a great job. I just wanted to mention that, uh, whatever, you know, if they're feeling stressed, definitely, um, let's pay attention to that.
Well, and one thing too, we did at the elementary level is, um, our, our program that we use called Units of Study is through Teachers College for Reading, Writing and Phonics. And they actually, uh, had expert teachers teach all of the mini lessons. Again, they're mini and, and as, as a parent of a student in our district, you've probably seen someone else teaching your, your daughter or other, the, the teacher. And that was one of the pieces too, to help, uh, is help with that workload is being able to have those videos available to use in-person as well as on the, on the, um, the non-in-person days. So that way all of our kids are getting the same instructional piece and keep, can keep the same pace, whether they are in-person or learning through Zoom or they're, uh, they, they miss both of those and they need to learn through CSO.
Any other questions for Amy? Anything else, Amy, you wanted to add?
Nope. I think, I think that's, that's good for me.
All right. Thanks.
Amy, would you let Norm Boplan come back in?
Oh goodness, yes.
All right. And we're going to move on to new business. Um, and the first item on new business is to approve a art teacher nomination. If you'll remember last month, we accepted the resignation of, uh, Jonathan Graphius, who was the, uh, longtime art teacher at PCS. Um, and tonight we're approving a, an art teacher nomination for Caitlin Kennedy. Do you want to speak to that, Ken?
I do. Uh, I had the pleasure of meeting Caitlin, uh, uh, last week. Uh, a dynamic, dynamic person. Uh, she is currently serving as an ed tech in another school district. Uh, has a great background in art. Uh, I believe that she'll do an incredible job. Uh, she's got an incredible story. Uh, I think that the one thing I learned the most from her was that, uh, this pandemic has made it difficult for her, uh, in regards to like it does for most, uh, teachers of elementary kids. You can't hug kids anymore because of the pandemic. Okay. And they can't hug you. Uh, I think she's a, a quality find. I think both, both, uh, Caitlin Brown and Jess Mattson were pretty impressed with her. And I have to admit that I was pretty impressed with her when she came in. So I highly recommend that she be, uh, she be approved this night, uh, so we can get, get her in here sometime, uh, just prior to Thanksgiving.
Do I have a motion?
So move, Mary.
Okay. Motion from, uh, Norm Boplan. Is there a second?
I second.
And a second from Kelsey. Uh, is there any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I think that second was Lena.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we let it go.
Okay. A second from Lena. So we have a, a motion and a second or any questions or discussion? Okay. Being none, we will, uh, and this vote is to approve. Uh, Ed Rubasco?
Yes.
Joe Parent?
Yeah.
Melanie Harvey?
Yes.
Norm Boplan?
Yes.
Norm Davis?
Yes.
Laura Heeman?
Yes.
Mike Downing?
Yes.
Steve Holbrook?
Yes.
Amber Lyman?
Yes.
Lena Stotz?
Yes.
Kelsey Earl?
Yes.
Mary Martin? Yes. Travis Ritchie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Okay. So that's unanimous. So thank you. Uh, the next, uh, action item is to approve, uh, school bids. And, um, the information is in your packet. And this was also recommended by both the operations and the personnel and finance committee who reviewed these during their meetings.
Mary?
Norm?
Before we go back, looking at the odd person.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be at Elm Street and mine it?
Correct. And I think, Ken, do you want to talk about, um, the other placement?
The, well, their other placement, they, they, they work between the two schools. Uh, and they are, have the, uh, the luxury of having a really, really fancy cart going from classroom to classroom. Uh, so they are, they're, that position's shared.
Okay, but the.
PCS, is that your question, Norm?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay. Well, we have, uh, we have a transfer from, uh, from, uh, within, uh, and, uh, she'll be going to PCS, uh, as soon as this person gets, uh, onboard. We, we have Kelly, um.
Kelly Witten.
Yeah. So she's transferring, Norm.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. We have, um, the information in terms of the bus bid was in your packet. Uh, Ken, do you want to speak to that?
I do have Craig Worth with us, so maybe Craig can speak to it.
Okay. Go ahead, Craig.
Thank you. Yes, we have, we have a bid for 77 passenger bus bid. Uh, we had, I believe, three bidders for that. During the operations meeting, we gave a reason we didn't, uh, choose the low bidder of that. We chose WC Cressy and, uh, and the committees voted to go with, with that bidder.
Craig, do you want to tell a little bit of the thought behind that? Going with, not going with the lowest bidder? What was the, um, reason?
One of the reasons is probably predominantly, uh, we don't have bluebirds in the fleet. We only have one bluebird. The, uh, hope is to standardize parts and, uh, and, and, uh, it'd make working on a fleet of buses that are all the same a lot easier rather than have a hodgepodge of buses that they're from different manufacturers. That was primarily the, the main reason to do that. Also, uh, Cressy is, is fairly local and it's easy to get, easier to get parts and have buses worked on.
Thank you, Craig. Any other questions for Craig? If not, uh, do we have a motion? Mike? You're on mute, Mike. We can't hear you. There you go.
Yeah, I make a motion. We, uh, accept the bid from Cressy's, please, on that bus.
Okay.
I second.
And a second from Lena. So we have a, a motion and a second. Are any more questions or discussion? None. Uh, Ed Rubasco?
Yes.
Joe Parent?
Yeah.
Melanie Harvey?
Yes.
Norm Boplan?
Yes.
Norm Davis?
Yes.
Laura Heeman?
Yes.
Mike Downing?
Yes.
Steve Holbrook?
Yes.
Amber Lyman?
Yes.
Lena Stotz?
Yes.
Uh, Kelsey Earl?
Yes.
Mary Martin? Yes. Travis Ritchie?
Yes.
Uh, Amy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Okay. So that was unanimous. Um, the next two items, I will ask Ken to, um, talk about their, um, related. So Ken and Stacy, you want to talk about the, um, vote to authorize, uh, the tax revenue anticipation note?
I'll let, I'll let Stacy talk about that.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. So as Ken was talking, the, the coronavirus relief fund grants that we have have to be expended by December 30th. Round one was for $1,413,200. Round two is for $1,482,740. That is over $2.8 million and with all of our other grants and the general fund expenditures, we just don't have the money in the bank to keep that cash flow going. We submit invoices monthly, um, or, or half the month. In October, we had three payrolls, so I did submit an invoice for half the month. But so far, we've only been paid the July and August invoice. DOE today let us know that they have 150 invoices that they received through October 8th and another 30 from October 9th through October 15th. Um, this, this is what one of the invoices looks like. We have to submit every invoice, purchase order, timesheet and certification pages for payroll to them. And there's only a handful of people up there working on those. So it's going to be a while to get the turnaround on the invoicing. So we do need to make sure we have cash flow on hand to cover the expenditures. And so that's why we're asking for the 1.199. We are able to legally borrow up to 5% of our last year's expenditures. And that, so that's where that number came from.
Um, Stacy, as I was, um, looking at the, um, statement, the finance charge is, um, 12,178. And maybe this is a, a question for Ken as well, just where, where does that money come from?
So this will be when we get reimbursed for the grants. We will, that's what we will pay the bank back. There is no prepayment penalty, so that interest does run through June 30th. Hopefully we can get it paid by maybe April. As, as you know, we have to spend the money through December. And then hopefully it would be three months after that DOE would be caught up reimbursing us on the grants. Um, so that is the worst-case scenario, that $12,000. So that is the worst case scenario, that $12,000, Mary, through June 30th. We do have to make a one-time payback, so we can't send them, you know, $100,000 every month or so. It does have to be one lump sum payback, because that's how we'll get it. And that's a great question, Mary, because that amount's not in the grant. So we pay back the initial amount from the proceeds from the grants when we get reimbursed. But that additional money will have to come out of out of our budget.
Right. And actually, as we thought about this, that we are saving, we should be saving significant substitute lines. So that would be my thought process to have it offset there.
Is this the manner in which DOE is suggesting that we cover it? And is it the way that other school districts are covering it in terms of cash flow?
This is the way the attorneys are recommending it. We did work with them on this. The school, other schools are doing it, just because the amount of money that all the schools are getting, none of them have this kind of cash flow. And so they all are looking for these revenue anticipation notes. One thing to note is that we only have one from Anders Skoggin, because as the attorneys advised us, because everybody's out there looking to do this right now, only the banks that you have a relationship with are going to lend you money. So we have a relationship with Anders Skoggin, and we have a relationship with our local Northeast Bank, but they are only partially open, only the drive-throughs open still for them. And so that's why we went with Anders Skoggin for the proposal.
Any questions or discussion? Mike Downing, do you have some?
Yeah, I make a motion that we accept that. Stacy, explain.
Okay, actually, we have two votes here. And Ken, can you just explain to us the difference between the two votes? And also, and within our packet, we have a written motion.
I'll try to explain it. Hold on while I get to it.
Or Stacy, maybe?
Yes, thank you.
Just some clarification on the difference between those two motions.
The first motion is to authorize the issuance of the tax and revenue anticipation note is from the attorneys, Mary. So that language is so that we can enter into that agreement. The second vote is for the acceptance of that proposal from Anders Skoggin to fund that tax and revenue anticipation note.
Okay, so the first motion should be the one that's within our packet, correct?
Yes, and I do have to actually record what each vote is, as you see on page two. I have already checked that you are attending remotely.
So Mike, you, the, do you see the, in our packet? And I can read it. It says, "I moves that the vote entitled 'Vote to authorize issuance of a $1.2 million tax and revenue anticipation note be approved in form presented to this meeting, and that the secretary file an attested copy of said vote with the minutes of this meeting." Is that the motion, Mike, that you want to put forth?
Yes, please.
Okay, so do we have a second for that?
Second.
And a second from Norm Davis. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Being none, Ed Rabasco?
Yes.
Joe Parent?
Yeah.
Melanie Harvey? Melanie Harvey?
Yes.
Norm Boplan? Did we lose Norm again? I'll come back to him. Norm Davis?
Yes.
Laura Heeman?
Yes.
Mike Downing?
Yes.
Steve Holbrook?
Yes.
Amber Lyman?
Yes.
Lena Stotz?
Yes.
Kelsey Earl?
Yes.
Mary Martin, yes. Travis Ritchie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Okay, and I don't see Norm back, but motion carries. So the second one would be to accept Anders Skoggin Bank as proposal for that tax revenue anticipation note that we just approved. We have a motion?
I make a motion that we take, accept the Anders Skoggin Banks proposal.
And a second?
I second.
And a second from Lena. So we have a motion and a second or any questions, discussion? Okay. Ed Rabasco?
Yes.
Joe Parent?
Yeah.
Melanie Harvey?
Yes.
Norm Boplan? Not back yet. Norm Davis?
Yes.
Laura Heeman?
Yes.
Mike Downing?
Yes.
Steve Holbrook?
Yes.
Amber Lyman?
Yeah.
Lena Stotz? Lena?
Yes.
Kelsey Earl?
Yes.
Mary Martin, yes. Travis Ritchie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next one is to accept E-Rate consulting services. Ken or Stacy, you want to talk a little bit about that? And within our packet, there was the information about that.
Annually, we go and get the opportunity to do electronic or E-Rate consulting. We've had a consultant for a number of years. We have chose to move on from that, and this is a new consultant. And he's laid out his requirements. Basically, what he can get us, I say he, what the consultant can get us is that it'll cost us 5% of whatever he gives us, gets us the savings. So it's, I don't want to say it's free money, but it's money that we can apply for, and it doesn't cost us anything. But we use the consultant and they get us more money, but it cost us 5% to them. It's something we do every year.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion from Kelsey to accept. We have a second. Second from Mike Downing. Any further questions or discussion? Ed Rabasco?
Yes.
Joe Parent?
Yeah.
Melanie Harvey?
Yes.
Norm Davis?
Yes.
Laura Heeman?
Yes.
Mike Downing?
Yes.
Steve Holbrook?
Yes.
Amber Lyman?
Yes.
Lena Stotz?
Yeah.
Kelsey Earl?
Yes.
Mary Martin, yes. Travis Ritchie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
So that motion carries.
Mary, who was the second on then? I get Kelsey is...
Kelsey and Mike, correct?
Okay.
Mike Downing. So the next one is to approve substitute pay. And if you remember, we have done this fairly recently. But in order for us to align our substitute pay with increases in minimum wage, we need to take a look at this. And the Personnel and Finance Committee did look at it during their committee meeting and did recommend this proposal. So Ken, do you want to talk a little bit about it?
Sure. Where the minimum wage is going up in January 1st to $12.15, what, we did not have the ability to meet that under our old standard. So what we've done is we've come up with a proposal, and we're looking at the minimum wage on this proposal is $12.50. And for the second year, we're looking at a minimum of $13. And of course, it does work all the way it's down. As you have more degrees or more credentials, it becomes a greater amount to $13, $14, $16 and $17 as we go through.
Any? Do we have a motion?
The question that was asked was, when does it take effect? It takes effect January 1st.
Okay, any other questions for Ken? If not, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion from Lena to approve, and we need a second. And a second from Norm Davis. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or further questions? None. Ed Rabasco?
Yes.
Joe Parent?
Yeah.
Melanie Harvey?
Yes.
Norm Boplan, still not back with us. Norm Davis?
Yes.
Laura Heeman?
Yes.
Mike Downing?
Yes.
Steve Holbrook?
Yes.
Amber Lyman?
Yes.
Lena Stotz?
Yes.
Kelsey Earl?
Yes.
Mary Martin, yes. Travis Ritchie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries. The next on our is to approve our draft board and superintendent's goals. And Ken and I talked about and put them together. We can separate them if you'd like. But the reason we put them together is that the alignment of our board and superintendent's goals is pretty essential. And then those need to be linked to our school goals. And Ken has been part of our goal development process, which I'm going to review in a minute. You know, we have... So we thought it would be good to look at them at the same time to support that alignment. So sort of the process that's gotten us here is that in September, the Educational Policy Committee looked at our goals, our current ones, and recommended that we have a school board workshop in October. And they also suggested that our goals continue to be developed around the same goal areas, which are communication and engagement, effective board structure and strategic plan. So prior to that October board meeting, we did have a workshop. And we reviewed current goals or last year's goals and discussed suggestions for this year's goals, 2021 goals. Following that meeting, a board self-evaluation survey was sent out to identify accomplishments, challenges and priorities. And those were also used as we looked at updating our goals. And as we looked at that self-evaluation, there were several themes that were kind of worked their way throughout it. And one that's been, you know, a strong topic this evening and, you know, all of our recent meetings is making sure that we have a strong pandemic response. And that within that response, that we have some equity, that we have access to resources and services for all of our kids. So those came up in our self-evaluation repeatedly, and they will also, you'll see, they are part of our goals. The other area was facilities, and in particular, our elementary facilities, that we continue proud of the work we've done on that, but that we need to continue to focus on it. And ongoing through our surveys over the years has been communication. And that continues to be a high priority and topic for us, and also making sure that we have adequate budget. So those were the areas that came up on our board self-evaluation. Educational policy, last time we met, had a discussion on these goals. And also, we got some feedback from the other two committees and used that feedback, the workshop, the self-evaluation, to kind of come up with a draft set of goals. They're in your packet. And if you look at them, the ones, the text that is in italics are the additions or changes. And under communication and engagement, the ones that are either changed or new. One is submitting the articles to Country Connection. And Lena's already offered to kind of take that on for us. And she and Amy have had some discussion about the kinds of topics and that they'd want to put forth into Country Connection. So we thank them both for that. So that's an addition. One of the things that is important to the board, and it's been, was in our workshop and our self-evaluation, is that we have a way to gather feedback and know that this plan that we've put forward to meet student needs during the pandemic is working. But also a recognition that it's hard work and that we need to be able to recognize both staff and administration. So we try to think about what are the avenues that we have to get that information? So oral and written administrative reports, recognition at board meetings. You know, Amy has asked, you know, what would we like to hear in our administrative report? And so that's a message that she's delivered to them so that we can get a sense of and have a strong sense of whether the remote and the hybrid plan that we have is working. Our next goal is to return to in-person RSU 16 school board meetings as soon as Maine CDC and DOE allows. And right now, that's not a possibility for us, but it would be a goal that we could get there soon. And then the other one was just in terms of making sure that we have an updating to our website and the school board part of it, that we take some responsibility for that. Under effective board structure and function, one of the things that came up in our evaluation and our workshop is that, you know, we were proud that we were able to take care of our teacher contracts and our support staff contracts and walk away from those feeling really good about those and our relationships. And we want to do the same with our transportation staff. So that is to finalize that agreement with our transportation staff. Other than that, some of the professional development, we put in there that we get support from Maine School Board Association when we need it for that professional development. We added, if a new school member desires, that we would designate a veteran board member as a mentor to them. And as part of our advocacy on the behalf of RSU students and schools, that we would find a way to hold an annual meeting with our legislators. So that's something we need to work on. Under strategic plan, the additional ones, we have all, we've had in there in the past, continuing to monitor the effectiveness of our programming through a staff and community survey, and we just added, including the hybrid and virtual instructional model. And then continuing to monitor RSU 16's pandemic response was an addition. And priority areas, the same, we pretty much left the same priority areas, which were school safety, transportation, elementary facility upgrades, and added strategies to support students and families. And then one of the things that came back on our self-evaluation during the workshop was just making sure that we are providing for all students in an equitable manner. So assuring equitable treatment, opportunities and support for all members of the RSU 16 educational community through district policies and practices. And we put educational community to include, you know, staff, students, community, administrators, our entire community. So those are our draft goals. And I don't know at what point, Ken, if you want to talk about how yours kind of dovetail with those?
Mine pretty much align with yours. Instead of the, I always, it says something about... Instead of the, I always, it says something about serving as the liaison, continuing to foster, advise the school board chair. So every one of them is aligned to yours to make sure. But I take on responsibility to implement or advise. And so they're almost identical.
Is there anything, Ken, in terms of priorities that you might have as superintendent that are not included in the board goals?
They are not. I think one of the greatest priorities that we've had, other than what we've done already with the pandemic, but I think is continuing to assess and evaluate our schools and their abilities to be able to operate the way as best we can, especially the facilities aspect of those. So I think that's a really, really high priority when it comes, for me at least.
Okay, is there a question and discussion about our goals? Anybody? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the board and superintendent goals?
So moved.
Thank you from Ed. And we have a second. And a second from Mike Downing. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions regarding those? Okay, so the motion is to approve. Ed Rabasco?
Yes.
Melanie, oops, Joe Parent?
Yes.
Melanie Harvey?
Yes.
Norm Boplat? Norm's not back with us. Norm Davis?
Yes.
Laura Heeman?
Yes.
Mike Downing?
Yes.
Steve Holbrook?
Yes.
Amber Lyman?
Yes.
Lena Stotz?
Yeah.
Kelsey Earl?
Yeah.
Mary Martin, yes. Travis Ritchie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we're moving on then to approve declaring old elementary desks and chairs as surplus. Ken?
Yeah, it doesn't require an approval. It requires a notification. As you had heard from Amy talking before, we purchased, as part of the grant, we purchased all brand-new elementary desks and thus making the ones that are coming out of the room surplus. And by policy, I'm supposed to notify you that I've determined that they are surplus. And what we will do is we'll offer them locally within our community, educational community first. Then we'll open it up to the communities of the towns and see if they are interested in them. If we're unable then to get them distributed, redistributed, we will then put them up for bid or up for sale. Without that, then we have the ability then to dispose of them using the primary means of recycling as best we can and see if we can get a little bit of money with that. So it doesn't require an approval. It's just me notifying you.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Ken regarding those desks?
Ken, where are these all stored now?
That's a really good question. We do have a container that some of them are stored in. Some of them are actually sitting outside the buildings right now. So what we are hoping to be able to do is be able to share some of these with family members or families that if they wanted to have a desk, especially where everybody's working at home right now, that we could actually provide one to them that they could take home. But they're on the back of stages. They're in a container. You know, they're everywhere right now.
Yeah, the only reason I ask, and I hope that people will want them, just so we don't end up with a pile of junk like we have two or three times in the past.
Yeah.
Pile up around the school that just sat there for two or three years.
Oh, I promise you, they will not be around for two or three months.
Hallelujah.
We'll expedite the redistribution of them. And we'll get them to a good, a new family somewhere.
Well, that's good because, I mean, it's, you know, they're very usable and let's hope somebody wants them.
Yes.
Good.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to policies. And there are two policies of which were reviewed by the Ed Policy Committee and are coming to you with their approval. And they are both updates that are required because of the pandemic and the situation we're in. So Carrie, do you want to talk about the changes and the need for them?
Yeah, hi. So for graduation requirements, we just have to, we left pretty much everything in place with the exception of wanting to waive the co-curricular requirement for this year's seniors and next year's seniors. So the 2021 and 2022, even if everything turns to normal magically next fall, we wouldn't have time to help that group get caught up. And so we'll look at it again once we know sort of the outcome of how all this is going to play out with the pandemic. And then for eligibility, we simply are mirroring, we need to match what the current schedule looks like. Students aren't taking six classes now. They're taking three or four. So they have to be passing three classes plus roundtable. And then for any student who's on a reduced schedule, which a decent number of seniors are, they just have to be passing everything that they're taking. Plus roundtable.
Okay, do we have a motion? And that you could either do it to do them separately or together. Mike? Mike, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Yeah, thank you. I make a motion to accept them both as rewritten and approved by the policy committee.
Okay, so do we have a second to that? A second from Lena. So we have a motion and a second. Any questions for Carrie or discussion? Okay, seeing none. Ed Rabasco?
Yes.
Joe Parent?
Yes.
Melanie Harvey?
Yes.
Norm Boplat? Not here. Norm Davis?
Yes.
Laura Heeman?
Yes.
Mike Downing?
Yes.
Steve Holbrook?
Yes.
Amber Lyman?
Yes.
Lena Stotz?
Yeah.
Kelsey Earl?
Yes.
Mary Martin, yes. Travis Ritchie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. And so we are on to some reports. And Amy and Anna?
Okay, I guess I will talk first. So some senior updates. College deadlines are closing in for early action and early decision. So I know I've submitted three college applications for early action. And I know a bunch of other students have submitted for early action and early decision. Those sort of are closing up at the beginning of November and like November 15th, that sort of area. And then students are also starting their senior capstone project. So this was previously known as senior celebration. But because of COVID, we had to sort of change some things up. So we called it capstone. And it offers sort of an easier route than senior celebration, although senior celebration requirements are still there. So there are two routes that you could take with capstone. One is life after PRHS, where students have to research sort of where they want their life to go, how they're going to get there, and how they're going to manage their financials. And then the other one is sort of a more traditional senior celebration route, where you create an essential question and submit a proposal and have those submitted by Ms. Ned and Mr. Flynn. So I know we talked about the positive case at PRHS. And lucky me, I was one of the people who was quarantined during that time. So I have some input on that. While I was quarantined, attending school was actually a lot easier than I thought it was going to be. I thought teachers were going to forget about Zooms. I thought... I assumed bad intent, I'm not going to lie, but honestly, it went super smoothly. It was really good. I was able to keep up on work. I wasn't confused in classes or anything. So I appreciate administration for handling that so well. And then moving on to the new Wednesday, in-person Wednesdays, that was a little bit more difficult. So I'm in Cohort B, and recently Cohort A went to school on Wednesday for in-person. That was a little bit more difficult, I would say, than being in quarantine. It felt like the class on Zoom was kind of left unattended. And I know some of the teachers were struggling with it too. I checked in with them, a few of my teachers on that, to see how they were doing with it. But I don't know, the in-person Wednesday is... I know some students are also kind of concerned about actually being in school on Wednesday. I know Maine has had a huge spike in cases. And I think a lot of students are concerned with being in school for that extra time. And I know some kids have said that they thought that this Wednesday, being at home was the one thing preventing us from having more COVID cases at school. But we're hoping for the best. And I know students and teachers are working really hard to make sure we're all passing and having good mental health and being able to handle it all timely and effectively. So I think we're doing pretty well. I think we're doing good. So I'm going to pass it on to Anna now.
Thank you, Amy. So I was also quarantined for two weeks. And it wasn't bad because I Zoomed for my classes, most of my classes anyway. So it was pretty easygoing. And I was really surprised actually how fast that we were able to go back to school like after the case. Like I would assume it'd be like a couple of weeks, but it was like three days and I was very surprised. So I think that we handled it really well. And everyone seems to not like forget about it, but it seems we've moved past it. And I feel like I've heard from a lot of students and teachers that we have a really positive outlook at Poland. And that's something we should be proud of because I know other schools sometimes, it can be a little troubling, but I feel like Poland has a really positive outlook. And I've noticed personally, all of my teachers and staff have been really supportive and checking in with me and making sure I feel comfortable and my grades are up and everything. Also, this week is Spirit Week. So I feel like a lot of students are happy to have a sense of normalcy in school like we had before the pandemic. We have themed dress-up days and a fall-themed backdrop competition. So we have Funky Fall Day, which is on Monday and Tuesday, and Fancy Fashion Day, which is on Tuesday and Friday. So for Funky Fall Day, we're dressing up with the fall theme, like flannels, bean boots, fall colors, and more. And Fancy Theme Dress-Up Day is like suits and dresses and ties. So that should be interesting. For the fall-themed photo backdrops, each roundtable is going to design and create their own backdrop. And they're going to be judged on Fancy Fashion Day based on their creativity and use of materials. And everyone is allowed to take pictures in front of their favorite backdrops. And since they'll be dressed fancy, I can't wait to see their pictures. We also have music for bells throughout the week based on the themed day. And for Funky Fall Day, we have country songs. And for Fancy Fashion Day, we have classic 50s and 60s jazz standards like Frank Sinatra and Louis Armstrong. So it should be fun.
Wow. Well, thank you both. Do any of you have any questions for Amy or for Anna? Well, thank you both. You know, one of the things that, you know, hopefully you feel from the board is that we are a really student-centered board. You know, every decision we make is around what's best for students. And so you keep us honest around that. So thank you. We appreciate it. Moving on to the report of the board chair. And I did want to just talk a little bit about the virtual conference. And I had the same experience that Ken did. Even though there were parts of it that were frustrating because it was all virtual and what we missed was kind of that dialogue and questions that most of the questions were in the chat, you know, to the presenters. And so there wasn't a lot of that back and forth dialogue. And those people that I used to look forward to seeing at least that one time a year, there were people that I missed. But overall, I thought it was valuable. And I started it on Thursday with a workshop just for school board chairs. It was about two and a half hours. So as I thought about, you know, the sessions that I went to, I thought I would just share with you kind of my one big takeaway or two big takeaways from it. The school board chair workshop, I did get a sample of a public participation welcoming brochure, which is one of our goals to work on. So that's something that we can take a look at at educational policy. We talked some about self-evaluations. And since we just completed ours, one of the things that I have noticed over the last couple of years is that when we have new board members in the fall, it's really hard for them to complete that self-evaluation because they haven't been with us long enough. So the suggestion from several school boards who had experienced the same thing was that we might want to consider doing our self-evaluation in the spring because new board members generally come in the summer. We also did a review of Robert's Rules. And one of the quotes that I wrote in terms of school boards is that we want our schools to be well-run, but we don't want to run the school. So that was just a reminder in terms of role. Friday and Saturday, I went to one on advanced bargaining. And one of, I guess, the takeaway that I got from that was, you know, I talked about the importance of an open relationship with the association. And that is something that this board, I know, and administration values highly and something that we continue to work on. I went to one with the commissioner, meet the commissioner. And there were a few things from that. One, I tried to jot down those things that I thought would be of particular interest to you. She said that we can count on our state funding this year. She doesn't anticipate any cuts in that, but too soon to say for next year. But one of the good news things I thought was that she said that they will consider the 2019, 2020 student numbers for funding purposes, which I would guess that that would probably be to our advantage in that our numbers are down a tiny bit this year. She said if there are cuts next year, that they will prioritize programs and have a direct impact on students. They did urge us as school board members, she did, to contact our national senators and representatives to try to get that use-of-the-care dollars extended beyond the end of December and specifically mentioned Susan Collins as the person we might want to get in touch with. She also took some time to recognize the work of superintendents. And this was her advice to us, to be a little more gentle with them. So Ken, we'll give that a whirl. We'll try to be a little more gentle. I also went to two or three sessions on equity. And I guess sort of the takeaway, and you know, I think we are well aware of this on our policy committee, is that we always need to think about who does this policy impact? And are these people represented at the decision-making table? That if we're going to have equity, we need to be able to be sure of those two things. And then Friday afternoon, I was here, delegate for the delegate assembly, which was those four resolutions that we needed to vote on that we talked about in our committee meetings. That meeting is usually two hours long. It started at 3:30. Well, it was five hours long. So it got done at 8:30. All of the resolutions were approved with some tweaking, nothing particularly significant about it. And the thing that slowed it down is just that it was remote and every amendment or change had to be developed as a survey on the spot. So it was a long and frustrating meeting. But, you know, the, actually, the resolution that got the strongest support in terms of vote was the one on remote meetings. And that some people, we had... we had a lot, there was lots of discussion about the positives of remote meetings as well as the challenges of them. And I there was, and that was about just school boards having a choice locally whether they wanted to continue with remote meetings after the pandemic. So that is kind of my report. Thanks for hanging in there with me. I think I think Amy and Ken and I all felt that that's an experience that we can continue to benefit from. So looking at our A team reports that were in the packet. And I reading through those, there's lots of information. I appreciate the consistency that there particularly at the elementary level and in the reporting. And I guess I would ask now if there's any feedback that you want to give to Amy and and Ken or the administrators on other things you might like them to report on. You know, that was one of our goals is making sure that we have a sense of where how staff are feeling and that we have an opportunity to recognize the good things that they do. So if there are things that you would like to see in there, you can let Amy know and Ken, or you can make that suggestion now. Anything in that, any of those that you have question about? Okay, seeing none. I think we have ready to adjourn. Do we have a motion? All right, Steve made a motion. We adjourned. We have a second. A second from Mike Downing. So we'll need to vote on that. Ed Rabasco.
Yes.
Joe Parent.
Yeah.
Melanie Harvey.
Yes.
Norm Davis.
Yes.
Laura Heeman.
Yes.
Mike Downing.
Yes.
Steve Holbrook.
Yes.
Amber Lyman.
Yes.
Lena Stotts. Lena, Lena. Lena? We're voting to adjourn. I'm assuming that you're we can't hear you, but Kimberly. Kelsey Earl.
Yes.
Mary Martin, yes. Travis Ritchie.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
And Anna. All right, thank you. So we are adjourned and enjoy the rest of your year.